Ladies and gentlemen, it is 7:02 PM, January 7th of 2020. We would like to call the City of Portland Common Council Meeting's water. And we'll start off, if you're able, please rise with pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Next up, we have the opportunity for public comments. And we ask that speakers address council directly and that they pertain items on that council can deal with. Our first speaker, Bill Fiss.
Thank you, Mayor. As stated, I am Bill Fiss, and I'm here to address the council regarding resolution to authorize the mayor to execute purchase offer to purchase Parker School Building from the school district. And I strongly urge you not to do this. The best that can happen, the best outcome that you could get, in my opinion, is that an independent consultant will go onto the property as you have been authorized to do, or will be authorized to do, under the purchase offer, and find that it is in no way fit for the city to take possession of it. And all we will be out is the consultancy, eight, $10,000. The worst outcomes, I don't even want to describe. There is, it's a 91-year-old building with a 1951 addition that evidently was built over an ash pit. It's in the flood plain. It's about 120 meters away from Outer Creek. Not really good. And does this really do anything for the city? It doesn't seem to me it does. I don't think anybody benefits from this, except the school district, which gets alleviated from some of the consequences of its decision.
Thank you, Bill. Love it.
Thank you, council, for the opportunity. I'm also here to address the opportunity to purchase the Parker School. So I'm here representing our Chamber of Commerce, our 516 members and their 14,000 employees. I spoke to the council about this issue before, but we do have a couple of new members. So I think it's critical that I reiterate our support of this purchase. And we do that for multiple reasons. This is a business issue, and I'm speaking specifically about early childhood education. It's a business issue for two major reasons. First of all, we have very well-known studies that will show that today's employees, if they do not have reliable, adequate, early childhood education for their children, have more tardiness, more missed days of work, and while they're at work, have poorer production. So for that reason, it's important for us to have adequate daycare for today's workers. The second major reason is for tomorrow's workers. We also know that the most critical times that we should be educating our children is zero to five. I've stated publicly before, if the state was going to put 13 years of state-supported education into our society, we would be better off if they did that zero through 13 instead of starting at age five. This age is critical to us. It's critical because that is when the most rapid brain development is occurring. So if we cannot put our children in the best possible scenarios, they will never develop fully to their potential. That is our future workforce that we're talking about. So how does this relate to Parker School and who's going to benefit? Our daycare systems currently are in an unsustainable model. They cannot pay their employees enough. They cannot pay them what they're worth. They have too high of turnover. And this is because they cannot charge our working families enough to cover all of their expenses. So again, back to Parker, and what does this do for us? This unsustainable model, I believe, and many believe, will be fixed. And we think we are close, both by the state and a national level, to getting that fixed. Until then, we are trying to create the most sustainable opportunity that we can. The ability for CAPCO and the YW to come together into the Parker School scenario will make them more efficient than they are now and allow them additional time with sustainability until the larger issue gets fixed. So I know I've read, and the paper has put in before, people looking for guarantees and the concern about taxpayer dollars going into this project. I'm sorry, you all know from your work here on this council that guarantees are almost nonexistent. What I believe we do have are reasonable assurances, a plan being put into place to give us all reasonable assurances that this is going to work. I can also tell you the half a million dollar grant that's already been announced, there are reasonable assurances that further grant dollars will be announced very soon that will make these capital improvements that are necessary, that will make them be able to happen and help us create a more sustainable environment. So this is important for our community, for our workforce, for our employees. I also believe that this project will make Portland a more family-friendly environment that people are going to want to come to. I have a colleague in Wyoming County who sent me a note a few months back now. They are waking up to this being a big issue in their county because their largest daycare center closed their doors. And that is when they woke up. We're trying to prevent that from happening because this is going to be critical to keep these doors open for all of our employees and employees. So with that, obviously, we're very respectful.
Mr. Mayor, I do have just a clarification. You stated that you're here in official capacity.
Yes.
Representing 500-plus businesses?
516 members.
And 14,000 employees?
That's correct.
And you speak for them?
That's correct. So a survey that was done through our chamber, two-thirds of the respondents showed that they are very concerned about the daycare issues locally, both for themselves and their employees. Our Board of Directors has passed legislative priorities listing childcare as being one of our top priorities. So that gives me the power.
And taking these concerns to the governor's office and assembly in the Senate?
Absolutely, yeah. I've been working with statewide partners, including the Business Council and other chambers, to do exactly that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not on the agenda, but we have the opportunity for board reports. So we'll start off with the first ward.
There's still a little bit of confusion about recycling in the city. Still trying to get the word out. So as a reminder, this month, there will be no glass collection, just whole mangled plastic containers, starting the first whole week of February. That's the week, the first Monday of February. It'll be the first week of the month is glass collection and subsequent weeks are plastics recycling. More information will be forthcoming, but I just wanted to reiterate that and share that for those that they may be waiting for.
In the second ward, it's been fairly quiet over the vacation. We have had some snow, appreciate people shoveling their walks in time. We had a meeting with the first, second, and third wards combined, and we're talking about doing this on a quarterly basis. We appreciate the Elks of Portland allowing us to use their space. They were very generous letting us use their space. We're hoping to do it on a quarterly basis. So we'll be letting the public know when those will happen, when those will take place.
This is new. A couple of things. First of all, I have a constituent call me and thank me for helping them out with something that really I just facilitated DPW helped us out. We had a no parking sign that really was in the wrong spot, and cars were parking and made it difficult for this gentleman to get his own vehicles out of his driveway. And he brought that up to me, and I went to DPW, and they fixed that, actually fixed it a few weeks ago. So I wanted to thank DPW for that because it made a difference in some people's lives over there in the third ward. And the other thing is, we do have an ongoing issue at Outer Creek with the traffic in the sidewalk. And I know people are aware that I think now is the new year, we're set to go. I'm going to be, you know, working with the mayor and DPW and probably the chief and see if we can't reach some kind of reasonable solution that everybody can live with there. So that's for now.
In Ward four, for the most part, it's been very quiet over the holiday seasons. Like Ward one and two, I've had some residents contact me to get clarification on the recycling. And for the most part, everybody understands the reasoning behind it. As a reminder, the county is giving us a grace period to work with it, even though the very first load, Dump Thursday, was rejected. So.
They did that.
Yes. But hopefully, the communication with their own people will be, will work as good as hard communication with our residents. And that's it for the fourth.
Good evening. And from the fifth ward, just getting started. I had two calls from two different constituents about neighborhood issues. And so we're just stepping into that and working with that and consult with you in the near future about some of those neighborhood issues. And that's all from the fifth ward.
Sixth ward. Since 2013, there's been an issue with, probably longer, 40 miles an hour on Route 13 by McDonald's and all that. It's 40 miles an hour. Anywhere in the city of Portland, it's 30 miles an hour. I'm trying to get that changed through legislation, obviously, DOT, might get that reduced. There's various of a speed trap down there. We had a nursing home down there. We have residential areas down there. I think it's important to get that slowed down, especially with the Gateway Project coming and slowing down that into the construction zone. That's probably to be allowed to work on that. There's also a 40 mile an hour speed limit at Locust Stab, which is still in the city of Portland that I want to address also and get it down to 30 miles an hour. Planet Fitness is coming in the next several weeks. That's going in the PSC Plaza, which is good for business down there. Everybody want to join? It's $10 an hour. So that's it.
All quiet except for the ward.
First, I want to start out with the, thank you from our police department, acting very quickly regarding the shooting that had taken place on the Keller Grove the other night. They acted quickly. They did a thorough investigation and were able to locate the house and the individual that caused the shooting. The woman that was shot in the face, she is recovering quite well. She did lose some teeth, but there are some other concerns that the neighbors have brought up regarding safety in neighborhoods. But I just want to reiterate that they can certainly call the police anytime that they feel threatened by anyone in that neighborhood, especially this individual because he is out on bail right now. We had some issues regarding pavels in East Dan. I want to thank DPW for quickly addressing these. Sure, the residents certainly appreciate, I'm not trying to dodge anything anymore. At least for the time being. Another issue, trash toilet wood seen in the neighbor's backyard. This is being addressed as well. Just waiting for a report back from the city poll office as to how we can act on this. Still receiving recycling calls and emails. Hopefully, we'll get a letter up to everyone soon so that they can certainly be aware of how this program is going to progress forward. Also, we received some calls regarding the Parker School. I want to say the item number two on our agenda tonight. I had one constituent that is a retired school teacher. She noted that she is strictly against this. There's also someone else that actually, I guess, knew somebody that was part of the school board and had indicated this person that you don't really want to be part of this because of the over $1 million needed in repairs. Also received calls that this program is a great idea, and they'd like to see the city move forward on it. So right now, I think things are kind of mixed here, is how people feel regarding this item tonight. And that's all I have on my agenda this tonight, I guess.
Can I just clarify, Tom? The shooting on Keller Avenue, that was with a pellet gun, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. Which is still horrendous.
And it was, my understanding, it was a high-powered, high-velocity pellet gun.
Yeah.
Thanks for the clarification. And yes, the city responded quickly and continues to follow up on that. Happy New Year, everyone. This is our first meeting of the New Year. And like to officially welcome Jackie Chapman, Bruce Tyler, welcome you back.
Thank you, Mayor.
Congratulations on your election. And everybody else, congratulations on your election. Bill sliding over a seat. Still wave at you. The, excuse me, New Year's Eve, first leg is a very well-attended and enjoyable event downtown. Those of you who were down there, hopefully you enjoyed yourself. I had a good time with some friends and saw a lot of people down there. And not just the ball drop and the fireworks, but just the sense of community, people coming out. And the fun quick screen that was set up and some announcements was very appropriate. It was a very family-friendly, good community event. And I'm looking forward to other events that'll be coming forward, celebration taste of downtown this year as well. Talked to council, and we're looking at scheduling a work session. This will be open to the public, looking at me right here in council chambers this Sunday at 9:00 AM. Work for everyone, generally speaking, this Sunday, 9:00 AM. I'll bring donuts. If we are not negotiating donuts for a steak at the table. In the interest of moving along, we are going to stop negotiating the deal in the morning. And I'd like to read a proclamation about mentoring month for January. So whereas, the goals of National Mentoring Month are to raise awareness of mentoring, recruit individuals to mentor, and encourage organizations to engage and integrate quality in mentoring into their efforts. And a mentor is a caring, consistent presence who devotes time to a young person, help that young person discover personal strength and achieve their potential through a structured and trusting relationship. Research also shows that young people who are at risk for not completing high school but who had a mentor were 55% more likely to be enrolled in college, 81% more likely to report participating regularly in sports or extracurricular activities, more than twice as likely to say they held a leadership position in a club or on a sports team, and 78% more likely to volunteer regularly in their communities. And youth development experts agree that mentoring is critical to the social, emotional, and cognitive development of youth, helping them navigate the path to adulthood more successfully. And mentors help young people set career goals and use their personal contacts to help young people meet industry professionals and find jobs. And all the above-listed benefits serve to link youth to economic opportunity while also strengthening the fiber of our community. Despite these benefits, one in three youths will age, would reach age 19 without a mentor. And that constitutes a mentoring gap that demonstrates a need for collaboration and resources. And here in Portland County, there are many children on waiting lists who are waiting for adult mentors. So now, I, Brian Tobin, Mayor for the City of Portland, proclaim January 2020 as National Mentoring Month in Portland. And I urge residents in our community to recognize the men and women who serve as staff and volunteers, acknowledge that mentoring is beneficial, promote the creation and expansion of quality mentoring programs, and support initiatives to close the mentoring gap now and through the year. And if you have the time and the inclination, please volunteer. And there are three programs I'm aware of, I believe our Youth Bureau, the YWCA, and Access Independence, all have mentoring programs. Am I missing it? But there are opportunities, and there are people who are looking forward to having adult role models. Moving on, minutes from our last meeting, which was December 17th. Do I have a motion to consider filing, said Minutes, Katie Siliman, 2nd, Bill Carpenter, any issues or concerns regarding the Minutes? There are none. All those in favor of filing the Minutes as is, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? And we have another item of business, beginning of each year. We are swearing in the volunteer business officers for Board of Engineers. And this is the administrative branch, where volunteer firefighters. Hopefully, most people are aware that our fire department is a combination department of both aid and volunteers. So we want to swear in the volunteer business officers and then the fire police. And we also have the introduction of a couple of firefighters and captains who have been promoted. So I will start off, and I ask the volunteer business officers to come forward, meet me here in front of the room. What we're going to do, I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand. And I will say, I state your name, and you're going to say your name, nice and loud. And then repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear. I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And I will faithfully discharge the duties. Of fire business administration. Fire police. We have fire police coming forward? Listen, I want you on the same line. I state your name, and you state your boy name. So I ask you, please, to start by raising your right hand. I state your name. Do solemnly swear. I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And I will faithfully discharge the duties. Of fire police. According to the best of my ability. Excellent. Congratulations. Okay, so all members of the board and all the fire police need to meet with Mr. Parker to get him to sign, sign the book. The rest of the contingent is going to leave, not out of any disrespect to this council, but they're 30 minutes late to train. So we're getting out of here. So again, thank you for your time, Mayor, with us. Thank you, Chief. Please welcome the podium, Fire Chief Wayne Freeman.
First off, thank you, and again, I echo the mayor's comments. Congratulations on your reapportments to the council. I look forward to working with all of you. The next phase of this is a little something that Chief Glover started in his tenure. Obviously, we go through people. People are hired to become part of the community, part of the city, part of our organization. Chief Glover always felt it was important to bring the people here after they're hired, career staff specifically, if they're hired, so that they can put some faces, names, you might get, so you have an idea what it is. So first two people I'm going to call up are two recent firefighter hires. And this is due to retirement from last year. So first up, I'm going to call them both up. Mitch Gasser and Jordan Zelznak. Okay, Mitch Gasser, he's the first one in the line. He was hired in October. Mitch comes to us, and that is a new face to the department. He was a volunteer, a very active volunteer, and also a bunker for our organization. He went, prior to being hired here, went through the firefighter training program on his own because he realized this is the job he wanted. So he came to us trained and ready to go. So we're very fortunate to have him onboard as a career firefighter now. So Mitch Gasser, City Council. Jordan Zelznak. Jordan comes to us, also spending a brief time as a volunteer and a bunker here. But he came from us, we stole him from the city of Norwich. So I'm still working on those relationships, but he comes to us as a firefighter, paramedic, received much of his training over there, and comes to us as the third Zelznak in our fire department. We have Captain Jim Zelznak, his father, and his brother Tyler. So he's onboard, and again, he brings, well-trained, ready to go. So we're fortunate to have these two firefighters onboard. They came in on October. I speak for the council. There you are. Jordan brought Emberly, his daughter, right? Is she there with Derek? Yep. So she's been standing here for 38 minutes. She's doing very well. Here's her councilman. So with the retirements of Chief Glover, Deputy Chief Nick Kabacher, as well as Captain Price, the promotional phases took in. And so we've got two new captains, and they're going to come up. Don Hughes and Matt Van Huesen. All right, first in line, just because he's first in line. Don Hughes, Don Hughes is a 17-year veteran of the department. He came here in 2003 with, me. And he brought, he came from the left coast, as we call it, from Olympia, Washington, where he is a 10-year career firefighter there. So he's come onboard, and we're very happy to have him onboard as one of our newest captains. So Don, City Council. City Council, Don. Matt Van Huesen. Matt's been a 15-year member of the department. And he comes to us with some volunteer experience as well, and offers a lot of insight on the EMS side of things, working to improve our things and make sure people are doing what they need to on the EMS side of it as far as training and stuff. So we're fortunate to have him onboard as well. So Matt Van Huesen. Both of these captains have been assigned to the shifts respectively. They'll be running out of Station 2 on the 203 engine as a junior captain, so. Chief?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Chief, that is all. Yes, sir. Pardon? We're good?
We're good.
Thank you, Chief. Read the proclamation. We'll move from agenda item number one to number two, which is consideration of resolution to authorize the mayor to enter to add the word contingent, purchase offer to purchase Parker School Building from Portland and enlarge the school district. There's a timeline. Let me read this for the benefit of the record. So the purchase then would be followed by an agreement with the YWCA and Capo of Portland County. And timeline is as follows. January 7th, today, would be our vote. January 14th, the city school district board would have the opportunity to vote on the proposed sale. And assuming that both And assuming that both votes are in the affirmative, after a forty-five day waiting period, which would put us into March, there would be a public referendum to be held to approve the sale of the building. April and May, then council would, we will come back to council the vote to approve a potential lease agreement and deal with closing paperwork, assuming contingencies have been met. And the building, according to this timeline, may be ready to be back up and running July one of two thousand and twenty. So asking for a motion to consider the agenda item, Katie Silliman, second, Cat McCarthy, discussion. And we do have some people in the crowd who can answer some questions if needed.
So Cat and I thought that we would give a recap for the benefit of the public. Very briefly, we're going to go over a document that we sent to council this weekend. It was a little late for the packet. We were trying to get feedback and create a comprehensive document as well as we were able to, and so we talked to people, sorry? Okay, so we talked to people over the weekend. All right. The background is that the Parker School Task Force was formed from some county legislators, neighborhood representatives, city council members, school board members, and I think I hit the major groups. After we found out that Parker Elementary School would be closing in June two thousand and nineteen, and in the early phases, the task force met with people, met with the public and asked, what would you like to see in this building? People overwhelmingly said kids, we want to see kids there. This is the only school that is in the center of the city. The other elementary schools are around the perimeter of the city, and the people in this neighborhood desperately wanted to see kids in this building near the park that had just been refurbished. So then the task force set about putting out the word and identified two nonprofit entities that were interested in working together to use this space. So that's, that's how we came to the current solution.
And the two nonprofits that Katie's alluding to is the YWCA of Portland as well as Capro. The proposal really looks at the two organizations occupying the facility for their operations for daycare, for child services, but is looking for the city to buy this property because it will help them leverage funding to operate and to bring the building up to speed, up to where it needs to be. So there is grant funding available, but by having the city own it, it's available to municipalities. So the project really looks at operation of it owned by the city, but operated by these two facilities, potentially a third that would also focus on childcare services. The ideal is to set up some sort of lease, probably a five-year lease, for them to occupy the building and pay the cost of operation. The city would not be making money off of leasing out that building, but really just covering the cost of operation for that. So the tenants would be responsible for operating costs. The school district currently holds outstanding bonds on the building, and they've indicated that they'll allow the city to buy it, to lease it to nonprofits as long as it's done through at no profit. So there's a few conditions that will be required through a letter of intent for this project to move forward in addition.
So the purchase offer is contingent upon the following. A letter of intent from both Capro and the YWCA, including their previous rent history, sources of income, including but not limited to grants, donors, and income from services provided. They will provide evidence of successful grant applications and the stability of the receipt of income over the past five years, and negotiating in good faith towards the execution of a five-year lease and entering into the same on or before April first, two thousand and twenty. A formal lease will not be negotiated and finalized until the time in which the building is purchased, of course.
Now, the mayor already spoke to the timeline for this project, and I think the one thing I just want to reiterate is that there's a number of steps moving forward past today, and during that time, there's more conversation that will be had about the specifics and details of the project to really make sure that it's worked through, that all parties are going into it with eyes open, and there are contingencies on this if something comes up that wasn't identified from the, from the start of the project.
And I'm sorry, there was a meeting yesterday morning that identified more details that need to be addressed, and an addendum was added to the contingencies. One is the city will obtain prior to closing a phase one environmental audit, and the second is the city will obtain an independent building inspection. So those are also contingencies prior to signing the lease. Right? I would like to address the public purpose. We have a shortage, Mr. Hayes spoke to that, we have a shortage of childcare, good quality childcare in Portland County. We're just four square miles, Portland is, but we serve the county, we serve the constituents in the county, and we need to remember that the city school district serves the same people we serve. So whether it's, it's still going to come out of there, it's still going to benefit them. We can't not put this building to good use. We can't just let it sit and rot in the middle of the city, in the middle of the neighborhoods. We need to put it to good use, and I don't see why the age of the building has to be a big deterrent. My house is almost a hundred years old. A lot of the buildings in Portland are old. We have this beautiful old architecture, and we need to, we need to take care of it. It's part of the legacy of Portland, this beautiful old architecture. So we have the school in the middle of the city, and we have a purpose for it, and we have two fine organizations led by two formidable directors. They know what they're doing, and people have come together to work on a solution that will benefit not just the city, but the county. And this has been a problem way back. When I moved here in two thousand and two, it was hard to find childcare for my son, so I stayed home. That model of having a parent be able to stay home with the child, that really isn't available anymore to people. They can't afford to do that. And so, as a city, I think it's very important that we show some leadership in this matter and provide childcare, assist in providing childcare by providing the place. I think we have an unspoken mission to work, not just for the city inhabitants, but also to help the county, and it's going to help the school district as well. And I would like to start this new decade in a spirit of collaboration and working together for the people that we serve, and this is something that is, this is, this will fill a void for people, for working families in Portland. So I think it's important, I think we have a public mandate to take care of this.
Thank you, Katie, Cat. The first thing is, I want everybody to know, everybody up here on this council knows the importance of daycare. It is a very big issue, and I can say that because again, to, I'm a father, and now I have granddaughters and grandsons. There are some of us, though, who are very concerned and feel we have to do due diligence on this. A building condition report was done in two thousand and seventeen, which lists many, many concerns and millions of dollars worth needed for this building. And that is why yesterday morning, we chose to make sure that a phase one environmental study report be done, and an independent certified building inspection be done at no cost to the city. So again, to, that is not at a cost to the city. Okay? Rather or not, of some of the things we've heard about, one of the additions was built on ash, and then later on had foundation problems because it was built on ash, that it used to be heated by diesel oil, that there might be a tank buried in the ground. These are issues that we need to find out. And again, we have to do due diligence. I personally, I will vote for this tonight to proceed, but I have many concerns. And also, one of the things that's been stressed to us by the daycare centers, and again, we want them all to succeed, but that the state is going to be helping them. Well, there is nothing in the governor's address tomorrow that I've seen that states anything about supporting daycares as of right now.
Can I just talk to that? When you're done? Let me know when you're ready.
Yes, you can. I was going to, I didn't have a chance to talk to you.
That's okay. I'd be happy to answer that.
But those are some of the concerns that I do have.
I'm, excuse me, I'm all for taking care of what needs to be taken care of, and I'm glad that those things are coming to light, but I would hope that this council can actually get behind this idea and knock down those concerns one by one. We should just deal with them in concert with these partners. They should be solvable. Let's do it in the spirit of, we're going to get this done.
I agree with Katie on that. Just the fire mouse audits and inspections will be some big numbers. I mean, just what little bit I know, fire level audit, you're probably looking at thirty, forty grand. Why else would they come back and find something? Are they willing to pay for it? We don't want to pay for it. That's from top.
We said yesterday morning we would not.
That's a lot of money to have to dish out and then find out if you can't use the building. I don't know if it's irreversible, it's money that they're at money or not.
Maybe we have to all write our representatives and.
See if we can get some, maybe we can get some money for it. I'm just saying, there's somebody, I just perceive something coming back, if you're going to find something, now you're talking even bigger numbers. Which is, that's something we got to address if we vote on it, it's just.
I agree with you totally, a hundred percent, and I, and I want to sort of repeat what the others have set up here. I think this has been a very transparent, can you hear me okay?
No.
No, you can't. We'll have to switch out.
I don't think it's on.
There's a switch. You have to switch. There, how about now?
It's fine.
It'll take a little while, but I'll get it. So just to sort of repeat what others have set up here, I think this is a very transparent process, and we do know there are some issues that have to be addressed. And I'm, I'm going to vote yes on this because it's just pushing it forward so we get a chance to address those issues. We may find out night and a road, that everybody may say we have to walk away from this, and if that's the case, that's the case, but we also may find out, as Katie said, that these are solvable problems, and we can contribute in a real positive manner to helping children's education at the same time helping businesses. I think it's very telling that Mr. Hayes is here speaking on behalf of over five hundred members and fourteen thousand employees. I don't think this is just a public policy issue, this is a private sector issue as well, and I hope that we can continue to look for partnerships there as we move forward on solving some of these things. So I say yes to moving forward with the contingencies that we have in there. I think those were, I think they were well thought out ideas.
The other thing that came out of Monday's meeting that I was, I was not aware of was the, was the five hundred thousand that was allotted to help this progress, progress and project move forward, not realizing that the city has to match that grand. The five hundred thousand is a max of twenty percent. The city has to come up with the other eighty percent, and we're over one and a half million right now.
Yep, that's, you're right, there are some concerns, there's still be some answers.
We do, and.
But I don't want to stop it in its tracks at this point.
No, and I'm glad that we had, we had this meeting the other day. It certainly set some light on some of the things that, I was in the dark, and I expressed about Katie and Cat that the information that we received Saturday was a little late coming, and I wish that we had had this several weeks ago, so we had more time to absorb this. I want to thank the Director of Finance for putting a four-page report together that they kind of spelled out some of these issues for us to consider as we move forward. I don't know if Matt wants to speak about any of these tonight or not, but certainly this information is out there and available to anyone that wants to see it.
I, I want to thank Cat and Katie for all the work on this. I really appreciate all the work you've done, a great job. Like, I think it's a great idea, and I hope it moves forward. We do have an obligation to the city of Portland and its constituents to also make the right financial decisions. I hope this goes forward, it's a great, great thing that's going on. We still have to protect the city, its constituents in all financial, so.
Heard a discussion from council. I also want to, want to thank the committee that worked so diligently on this. How long have you been working with this program now?
A year.
A year?
Over a year.
Over a year? Before we do vote, Kelly had mentioned she wanted to say something that Matt and I brought up.
I, I just want to declare.
Please come to declare.
Will council recognize the executive director for YWCA, Kelly Tovin?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, everybody. Just, just a point of clarification, the, the funds that we have so far are coming from not the state directly, so it is disappointing that there's not commitment in the state of the state for tomorrow for childcare, but our work at that state level will continue. Right now, there's a governor's appointed task force on childcare that actually I serve on and chair a committee that will continue its work through two thousand and twenty. Our, our goal and our, our charge is to still make a recommendation on what is going on in New York State, because this childcare crisis is much bigger than just the Portland community. It is a statewide, and I will even go that it's much bigger than a statewide issue at this point. So I commend the work that the city's looking at, being able to take, you know, collaborative approach to being able to find a way that we can serve the children that need early education learning in our community so that they are ready for school. Just a, just a quick point of clarification, the grants that we've secured so far are not coming from the state directly. As much as I'm disappointed, we aren't going to get additional state from the governor or support from the governor's office at this time. The other grant funds that we have out there are from other independent sources. So that state of the state tomorrow is not going to impact anything we put forward at this time.
Ms. Glennon, did you want to add anything?
No, actually, I was just going to say the same thing Kelly just said, that again, we are committed to, we certainly recognize, appreciate all the work that council and the task force have done toward this. We are very aware that there are concerns and will very much, you know, agree with this is the way we should move forward. We need all the information we can get to make the best decision. We're supportive of that. We, as we've been looking at this for the past year, we are excited about the opportunity where we think this can take Portland, the opportunity to collaborate, to do this in partnership. We think, as we're looking at what's happening at the state, the regional, the national level, this kind of a partnership, I think, is going to open up the opportunity for even additional funding that we haven't been able to get our hands on yet. I know there are funding sources that Capro has, that has already head start program, that from the federal budget that was just approved, did amazingly, to my surprise, extremely well. That, there is a commitment there for early childcare, and so we're going to be right front and center looking to secure those resources as part of an expansion opportunity. So we're into this. We are committed to this, and for so many reasons, think this is going to be a critical opportunity for our community, and we appreciate your. And we appreciate your consideration of that.
Thank you. I do wanna say, first off, I do want to short notice, I wanna thank CAPCO and YW for coming yesterday morning. Again, it was extremely short notice, so both of you, thank you. Kelly, thank you for calling in and being on the road. We had discussed again, too, the, the understood ones, we discussed about the mansion grant and those are things that we will be working on, the logistics and the costs down the roadside.
Go around the table and go down and light up. I think we've got anything, changing there? City obtained fire...
You're talking about the addendum?
Yeah.
Very good. You wanna go through the addendum one by one, just to...
Yeah. Make sure we're all on the same page.
Sure, sure.
Sure, Troy.
Yeah.
So number...
Can you pull the microphone a little closer to you?
So the, I guess we'll just do one, two, three. The first one everybody's in favor of is using the whole building, fifty-nine thousand square feet?
Correct.
Yeah. Each response, reasonable response to request for financial documentation shown. We have a read on all that. Income area. Sasso brand application received income over the last five years?
I do.
Negotiation, good faith towards the execution of a five-year lease and entering into the same banner before April twentieth. Is that gonna be negotiable?
I, I don't think that's a drop dead, guilt breaking deadline. I think that's something I'm just trying, that, that may get stretched out.
Just something for the size of this job that I normally run into, which usually a lot more, more than five-year lease.
So maybe that should be more flexible.
Right. I just, I didn't know if something, you know, something like five years now.
I had concerns about that yesterday, so thank you. Bruce and Troy for...
And the two most important things are obviously the final two, the Phase One environmental audit, should it be stated in there that we're not responsible for?
Yes.
It's not, you know, it's not on yet. And same as the independent building inspection. If we're all agreements for that, then it's our report.
I think those are two really important.
We have a say as to who the independent inspection agency is?
We're not paying for it.
I realize that. I'd like to make sure certain items are covered in that inspection.
I ask corporation counsel, Rick, would you care to weigh in?
Yeah, I mean, the intention is for us to hire independent to be answerable to us. And that's what the independent part of audit is.
For size of the project, I'm sure we'll have to give bids on any of them.
Which they try to...
The size of the project, I'm assuming that is, you'd have to send it out for bids? The inspection, environmental study or...
I probably will call around and see what the prices are before I make that decision, but they would be experts, so we do have some exceptions relative to our fees.
I say we move along.
Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Oh, thank you. And yes, it's a step in the process, but there's been many steps. This has been brought to council, it was brought forward for discussion back in December, and it was also brought forward for discussion back last June. This will, I'm sure, continue to be a discussion topic for council.
Again, our heroes.
Again, item number three, consideration of resolution to approve the reappointment of Richard Van Donzel for position of corporation counsel for a two-year term commencing January one, twenty twenty. Motion. Motion by Bruce Tyler. Second, John Bennett. Discussion, not quite sure who he is, I don't know if I've ever heard of him, but I'll vote yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number four, resolution to approve the reappointment of Raven Parker for the position of city clerk for a two-year term commencing January one, twenty twenty. Anyone? Bruce. Second, Katie Sullivan. Discussion.
Same thing, don't know who he is, but I'll vote...
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number five, resolution to approve the reappointment of Matt Cook for the position of director of administration and finance for a two-year term commencing January one. Motion to consider. Phil Carpenter, second. Jackie Chapman. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And consideration...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We need to, we need to correct wording in this. Trust me, this older person does never want to be acting mayor, so we need to correct wording in that, please.
Deputy?
Yes, deputy mayor.
Charter says acting.
I just wanna throw...
You got to ask the things?
Yes, it's my job.
You're still not getting the favors. I'm sorry. I thought you put that in there.
Number six, resolution to approve the appointment of Walterman John Bennett, the position of acting mayor for a two-year term commencing January one, twenty twenty. Phil Carpenter, second. Troy Beckwith. All those? Any discussion? None. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Substitution? Seven, zero, one. It's a cock, gotta be a time.
Thank you.
So those passed, for, let me say thank you to the four for continuing in their positions and in their roles. Number seven, consideration...
Since these are all routine things, is it possible we could just go through seven through thirteen as one?
You're asking for a motion to consider consent agenda for seven through, where we going? What number?
Through thirteen.
Seven through thirteen? I don't like the melodic sound of my voice. Motion to consider, Ray, crack me in the, but motion to consider consent agenda for...
Agenda items seven through thirteen, motion to consider.
Bruce Tyler, do we have a second? Bill Carpenter, discussion? All those in favor of approving to do the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass the seven, oh. And then, motion to consider approval of the consent agenda.
Yes.
Bruce Tyler, second. Bill Carpenter, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Seven, zero. Very good. Thank you. Great suggestion. Number fourteen, approve and transfer six thousand one hundred sixty dollars and sixteen cents for the wastewater savings ER and R to capital account to cover the Cedarwood Engineering invoices for two thousand and nineteen for work on the bio gas generator. Motion to consider. Phil Carpenter, second. Troy Beckwith, discussion? Bruce Adams, wanna give very quick synopsis?
Good evening. This is necessitated by the glacial pace of NYSERTA's reimbursement of our two million dollar bio gas generator grant. And the money has been spent, so our capital fund is, is emptied out. I need to cover these bills. I'll just pull it out of ER and R until we can get some money coming in.
There will be money coming in eventually.
Do you have any timeline for when said money might appear?
One would think so, and I thought that National Grid was going to be the problem, but no, it's NYSERTA itself. I think, I think the application takes up permanent residence on one desk after another.
Matt?
Yes, Matt.
I might be able to help you. I was on the phone with NYSERTA today, being somewhat interested in this million dollars payment. There is nothing that our engineers, nothing that the city hasn't left undone.
Multiple times.
I was assured today that it will be paid in the month of February. That is important because as the state goes into the end of its fiscal year, it pays no bills three weeks prior to the end of its fiscal year in March. All I can say is that two-thirty today, I got assurance that will be February.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Heard it before. True story.
I'm losing this. Bruce, I'm here, so I'm not really sure we're talking about NYSERTA, is that a grant that we're...
Yes, NYSERTA awarded a grant for two million dollars to the city to defray the cost of an anaerobic digister gas electricity project.
Looking for the new person. Waiting for the rate. We need to cover our costs until then. It's a great project that if you have a Ted Shesky sit down and, and be able to tell you a little more.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number fifteen, resolution approved mayor entering into an agreement with Fire Service Mutual Aid Plan for a period of two years, and that's January of twenty twenty through December of twenty twenty-one. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Jackie Chapman, discussion? Chief Griebman is here for our question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And then number sixteen, enter into an agreement with Family Health Network for health services related to OSHA and hazmat requirements for firefighters for a period of two years, it's twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Motion to consider. Troy Beckwith, second. Katie Sullivan, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number seventeen, resolution approved sidewalk snow removal bid to Matt Taylor. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Troy Beckwith, discussion?
Is it Captain? Yeah, there it is. Is this the same person?
No. We had, we were actually quite unhappy with the individual that was doing it towards the end, and we were looking to rebid it as soon as possible anyway, and he sent us notification that he was terminating his contract without notice, so it was no longer an issue. So we, we did rebid it. We had sent out the bid twice. First time, we, we had one respondent that we didn't feel was acceptable, that was just too much money. And we changed some things in the contract in response to, we talked to some of the people that we thought would be interested, and we rebid it again. And this is in regard to the next two items, and neither, Mr. Taylor did not bid everything, but he was significantly cheaper for doing the sidewalk shoveling. The other contractor was interested in doing all of the services, so we, we'll use him as a backup sidewalk shoveler, but he'll be our primary for the other items.
Yeah, can, can Mr. Taylor, I mean, this is a significant difference.
Yes, sir.
Unbelievable.
Yes, sir. The original bid was ten dollars per foot for the, for the other one. The seventy-five cents a foot is what, is what we were paying before, so, so Mr. Taylor is doing it for the same price we were doing it before. The, the hourly items before, Devin, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think before we were paying twenty-three dollars an hour, which I think for an independent contractor was probably low, and the sixty dollars is probably a little bit high. But I guess I would also say that by the time it gets to a referral from the code office, I, I wouldn't wanna do it for less than that because it's, it's not very pleasant work. So I, I think it's not unreasonable what he bid the sixty dollars an hour for the next agenda item, but they are significantly different, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Captain.
And we don't, we don't end up eating, eating us anyway eventually.
No. They give buildings. But the one bid was just, I thought it was a misfortune.
And, and I did talk to the, actually, Tom Tobin from our office talked to the bidder at length about it, and his concern with bidding it by the foot was like that, was that he didn't know what he would get into. You know, if he's gotta chisel it, which I know our contractors have had to use a chisel before to chisel it off because it's been walked on for three, four days or more, so it's a concern of theirs that, that is not invalid. He was bidding it for the worst case scenario, so I think if we do ever hire him for shoveling it, we'll tell him to do it by the hour and not by the foot.
Matt comes from a fine tradition of keeping the sidewalks clean, but I remember how his dad used to keep the sidewalk in front of his store, so...
Spotless.
Yes. I should thank Matt for making sure Matt knew about this, and he's the one that pointed it out to Matt and got him to bid it for us, so we're, we're very happy with him so far. He's been doing it on an intern basis for us and doing a good job. And on the note of sidewalk shoveling, if I could just have a moment of your time on that, we're looking at redoing the policy and the way that we do it. The way we've been doing it in the past, we've been notifying property owners through certified mailing, and waiting for that to come back. That is a very time consuming process, and we're not gonna do that anymore. It's not required by the law that, that we have, and it's not effective. So we're going to start posting on the property and doing a penalty at, at that time that will start out as a twenty-five dollar penalty as opposed to the city incurring the cost of shoveling it, and it'll be in a more timely fashion. So we're hoping that that's going to speed up the process overall, and I just wanna make sure council is aware of it ahead of time because I'm sure that someone's gonna be unhappy with it, but I think overall, there's gonna be a lot more people that are happy with it, so hopefully we're, we're gonna be moving forward.
So we're gonna change, maybe we should have this agenda item in this meeting to let the public know that we're changing things so they're not, you know, caught by surprise. I mean, this is the first I'm hearing of this, I don't, I don't close it, but I just don't like to have kept you by surprise.
That's a good idea. We have a lot of elderly that don't really take a top of things.
Right.
We hate to penalize those individuals until a family member or somebody can come over and take care of the things for them. We certainly like to give people a heads up.
I don't disagree with the idea, I'm just asking, I'm just finding out about this, do people know that we're gonna be doing that? And I think, again, I'd like to, I'd like to let people know, be transparent, here's what we're doing, we're changing policy, this is why, you know, so they're aware of that, that's all, that's all I'm saying.
So we can put this down as a potential agenda item for the next discussion, and then if there is action that needs to be raised, we can really discuss.
Would that fit with your timeline?
That's fine.
It's all fine, it'll be only a snail.
Unfortunately, the process we're following now is ineffective. It, it takes us pretty much two weeks to shove, be able to shovel a sidewalk under the current way we deal with it, and that, that's not moving on.
Thanks for coming up with a better solution.
No further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And number eighteen, resolution approved lawn mowing and garbage pickup bid to Hart Lawn Care. Motion by John Bennett, second. Katie Sullivan, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And thank you, Captain, thank you. Number nineteen, consideration of resolution award contract for program, delivery and administration services of the CDVG nineteen funded sewer lateral replacement initiative in the amount of four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars to Toma Amelton Consultants for a amount not to exceed seventy-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Motion to consider. Phil Carpenter, second. Katie Sullivan, discussion? So this is a grant, CDVG monies, states, and I believe is originally from the feds, but this will help low mod income property owners replacing the sewer laterals from the trunk line or main line to their homes. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number twenty, resolution to amend the city's twenty-twenty general fund budget to reflect change in, or the veto on the city's authorization to impose an occupancy tax. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Phil Carpenter, discussion? So we did our budget planning, and the Assembly and the Senate approves a potential three percent occupancy tax for the city of Portland, however, when reached the governor's desk, it was vetoed. So that was put into our budget, we're looking to make a change to our budget this year, and we may have, be having some further discussions about our twenty-twenty budget as the year progresses, to make sure that we are on track.
We've gotten an email recently.
Katie? I'll give the next one. This is a budget amendment, so I think I know where you're going. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. So this, agenda item 21, resolution to see a home rule amendment authorizing the city to impose a 3% occupancy tax to support tourism, Route 13 and River Street redevelopment and economic development. And this would be what we just talked about in terms of the application and being approved at the Senate and Assembly, however, vetoed at the state level by the governor. Basically stepping back up to the plate and taking another step. So looking for a motion to consider, John Bennett, second, Bill Carpenter, discussion. I'd love to give it forward to Katie.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I jumped the gun. So we did, all of us got an email from Megan Lawton regarding this, and she's very concerned, her, what's her role, again, she's the director of this. Okay, she's the director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And she spoke to Kat, who is stepping out of this discussion because of a possible conflict of interest as her role as the art director.
I also serve on the board of the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Okay.
Went back with their consent, I was asked to abstain.
And a couple of things came to light, she would really.
Sorry to interrupt, but.
She was advised.
She was advised. So would it be appropriate to stay and be abstaining or to recuse in the room?
Unless it's second session, she'll know what you guys talk about anyways because it's recorded.
Very good, but abstaining from the conversation?
Yeah.
Just wanted to clarify.
So I, as you know, I voted for this initially, I was all in favor of it. I primarily still am, but a couple of things came to light, and apparently Megan would like to come talk to us about them, and she would be able to do so the very next council meeting. So I'm going to suggest that we table this. One thing that came to light is she said that the big tour buses that come shop around and neighboring counties or neighboring cities are at 5%. If we go to 8%, they might pass us by. So I agree, John and I were talking before the meeting, I agree that individuals probably wouldn't move on, but a tour group is going to shop for the best dollar. And it was also mentioned that possibly we could do a business improvement district, which I do not know a lot about. So apparently, we've talked about that before, John says, but I think in light, the fact that we have two new people on council, maybe it would be worth revisiting next meeting, put it on the agenda, let her have her say.
May I ask, where did she say they would drive to? Because I'm a dog at county, is looking to increase their occupancy tax.
I did not speak with her.
What's that?
Did they already move on?
They might have, I think they're raising theirs three or four percent.
I don't, I don't, I don't know that it hurts to wait two weeks to let her kind of a chance to come and talk to us. I have some questions myself about this, but I think, I'd like to get off on a right foot with all these people and have positive relation and interaction with them. I think we should let her come and speak with us, and then we can answer questions, and then we can take our vote forward. Mayor, does it make a huge difference if you do it now or we go two weeks from now?
Why don't we ask the person who wrote this up, Matt?
I was not extended the personal courtesy of the email they were referring to.
I can't even.
I can forward it to you.
No, I would rather it be forwarded by the executive director of the tourism, that's a professional courtesy. I will, I will remit to each of you once again, the rather extensive research that we did on this particular subject, which debunks, which debunks the arguments that have been put forth by the Tourism Bureau every year for the last five years that I've been chasing down this hole. The answer to your question is? No, it does not. Caused much of a lag. I did it for the reason that I was in Albany, I will be in Albany to file the home rule amendment with the home rule office, but I will be in Albany quite a bit here in the next three or four months, and I will bring it up with me. All that I would ask, that if you get into a public debate, I want to be heard.
Yes.
And I'm also going to ask that prior to the public debate for the next presentation, is that you take the time to review in detail the rather extensive research that has been done on this subject.
Which those of us on council had asked us.
Could you send that to me?
I will, I will re sending that back by the end of the week.
Thank you.
If not tonight.
Yes, it was. And this was approved again by the State Assembly and the State Senate, which in the past have not gotten through the State Senate.
I'll yield to what the majority wants to do, but.
If you could, it's a process issue. If you could forward the email to me, I would appreciate it.
I have no question that your information is absolutely correct, Matt, but to me, I'm here the first time in a long time, for me, it's just a process issue. But if the majority of the board wants to go ahead with this, I, okay.
Yeah, we did ask this out extensively over a year ago. And it came down to the fact that the county is always already taking this money, even though not much of it's coming back to the city. The city is going to take the 3% and put it back into the city. It's going to be put towards projects that are well needed and need the funding. I travel a lot, and I'm not surprised to see an 8% tax tagged onto my hotel bill. And believe me, that's, that's minimal.
Let me ask you this, then, John, we don't have an occupancy tax now, do we?
For the city?
No, it's a county, but not a city. So it's an 8% sales tax plus what's the occupancy tax right now?
And I think the county is, what, what are they, 3% or 5%?
It was Matt, Matt.
The county is at 5%, so in total, this 18% is the occupancy tax.
So, so on condition, so you have the sales tax, then you have the occupancy tax, so it'll be, instead of 8, 5, it'll be 8, 8.
And in the research, you will see the occupancy tax to our north and to our south. One was watching the Syracuse papers of the last week, Syracuse is moving upon itself to a 7%.
The one, the one other thing to remember is, this money would be as a save, but also applied toward the Clintonan Gateway Project, which makes the hotels down at that end, their infrastructure much better, newer. The county isn't spending any of this money on this. We're the ones spending money which then helps our hotels and the other city facilities.
I'm not debating the yes or no of the tax, it's just a process thing, so I'm ready to move on, ready to move on.
Well, I would recommend, it was a little bit ago, but I remember my first day at a council meeting, and there were things going very quickly, and my head was turning. And in deference to, we have two new people on council, this is an issue that, yes, was discussed ad nauseam last January, but I don't see why it wouldn't hurt for us to bring the discussion forward again, give the two new members the opportunity, opportunity to learn about it, and also to reinforce with the community what our plans are and why we would be doing this, because it has been a bit of time. So I would encourage council, let's table this, we can bring it forward at the next meeting and have a discussion. Because obviously, there's a lot of information that's coming out tonight, some of it, a lot of it has been out there, but not everybody has that information. In the past, we've done important decisions, we like to take over two meetings, everybody has the right information and all the questions are answered.
So this person's going to come in, are we going to have the people that came in Marshall to speak to us?
I'm sure she'll absolutely, Marshall tomorrow again, and they'll try doom and gloom, which is natural.
I'd like to take a roll call vote and see where we stand right now. Sitting here talking about just people that.
We agree.
And that would be to table it?
No, that'd be to approve it.
To approve it?
Yeah, that's what the agenda item is.
Don't you have to vote on somebody?
Well, he's speaking that.
Has there been a motion to table the agenda item at this point?
I would table the agenda.
There's a motion to table the agenda item, does that have a second? That is seconded by Ms. Chapman, so then at this point, we need to vote on the potential to table without discussion, correct?
Give a date.
And to give a date. So the date, Katie, would be tabling it until our next meeting, which will be the 21st of January?
Right, yes.
Until Tuesday, January 21st. Let's make sure we did this accurately, so I'll do roll call, which means I will go by ward, one through eight. And if you are voting to table it, you're voting aye. And if you are voting to move forward with the vote this evening, then it is nay. So the vote is whether or not we are tabled, and voting in favor of the motion on the floor is to table it. So first ward.
Abstain.
Third count.
I vote to table, aye.
Third.
To table.
Fourth.
Nay.
Fifth.
Table.
Sixth.
Nay.
Seventh.
Nay.
Eighth.
Nay.
So the motion to table fails, three to four, correct?
Yes.
You want an extension? So the motion is still on the floor. Further discussion. So this will bring us $50,000, I'm assuming?
If the, if the governor approves it.
What's the, what's the plan for additional revenue, Matt? Into the general budget, we have a specific sort of.
How do I make up this 50?
No, no, no. If we approve, hold on, let me, let me just explain, if we approve this tonight, and it gets passed again, and the governor says yes, it sounds like we'll get roughly $50,000.
No, this is $150,000, $176,000 issued. $50,000, which is what was in your budget based upon the documented cost of providing police overtime and DPW overtime to service municipal events. We applied for that for reimbursement and participation in the county distribution of their occupancy tax.
Clarify, you said municipal events, we're talking community events.
Community events.
We're talking events that are put on not necessarily, and actually, the majority are not by the city, but by other organizations, and we are increasing staffing to make sure that people.
Community events, events that take place within the, within the city. We did apply for reimbursement. I sent council the denial letter that we are not allowed to participate in that under the rules set forth by the Tourism Bureau. $50,000 is what was put into this year's budget in anticipation, as the mayor said, of the $176,000. $176,000 would not come into the general fund, $176,000 would come into a separate fund. We would use those funds to reimburse direct costs that we have. The other costs, as spelled out in the resolution, is remote tourism, and that was in the original law, and promote infrastructure redevelopment in what I call a hotel area. And that would be principally to the east of the I-81 interchange, to service the hotels, to make the curb appeal of the hotels better, which in turn should increase occupancy.
All right.
That's the purpose.
You lost me. So we're going to get $150,000 to $176,000, maybe, if it all goes through the way we hope it will. And then that tax, that extra 3% will come right to the city, which resulted in $150,000 to $176,000, so that I understand. Then we're going to take that money, and we're going to reimburse the police department, DPW, et cetera, money that they have to spend for overtime to help with community events. Am I, am I getting it right so far?
That's unfortunately, yes.
And, and right now, that would be about $50,000.
About 50.
So then we have another 100 to, you know, 125,000 to promote tourism?
To work on the infrastructure.
Promotion of tourism and to fund infrastructure redevelopment to the area east of I-81.
Okay, because we don't have a, we have a separate department that goes out to promote tourism, that's what, that's what the Convention and Visitors Bureau does, they're the ones promoting tourism, mostly for our area, correct, am I wrong on that?
They promote tourism countywide.
Yeah, which we tagged along on some of that, I thought.
I would think what you need to do is take a look at the distribution that's coming forth from the county, and you will see very few, very few organizations that are here in the, in the city being funded through that countywide tax, even though, even though I believe that the county, that the city has 76% of the beds.
Okay, but, but we peeking back onto their marketing.
No, we don't.
These events, they used to, why don't we?
I don't, I do not run the county.
Right, but the Tourism Bureau used to, used to be part of the advertising for these events, they don't do that anymore? I mean, I wanted to hold this off so I can answer these questions, but.
I do find that the County Tourism Bureau, they, they put out a weekly what's happening, but you're also going to find out a lot of the money that goes from county tourism, a lot of their efforts is in the I Love New York campaign.
Yeah, right, right, I know that. I, what got my attention is, we can use this money for infrastructure.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, that, that makes sense to me. You know, I don't know that, that's a discussion for a different time.
But that would be, that's a discussion for a totally time.
Yeah.
If you wanted to use it all for promotion, if you want to use it all for, that's a discussion for real time. Right now, I don't, I can't present you that option.
Okay, but we could use this money for infrastructure. Okay. Thank you for your patience, appreciate it.
We have a lot.
Further discussion. Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstention, one abstention, so it passes 7-0-1. Agenda item number 22, consideration of resolutions authorize the mayor to execute contract to the city to join the Portland Community Perma Workers' Compensation Cooperative. I've been calling this an intra-municipal agreement. Let's have motion to consider it explained a little bit. John Bennett, second, Bill Carpenter, so the, Rick, let me know how I do.
Yep, I'll do it when I'm here.
The county has gone from a county-funded plan to being covered by PERMA, the city is covered, we do have workers' compensation, however, there are tail claims, claims that were acquired prior to January 1 of this year. So anything from January, January 1 on, it's covered by PERMA, but we are all, either individually or collectively, responsible for claims that were approved before then. So the discussion between the county, the city, the three, let's just say towns, villages, and then our districts, not everybody is in. But the discussion was about continuing the agreement in terms of how we're covering tail claims and the percentages that they were paid in 2019 to spend down to try to eliminate those tail claims, because it's a collective cost that we have agreed to in the past, and we have been paying off. But until those are paid down, then we need to figure out how to pay those down.
That's about it? The, if there's, if there's a shortfall over the next couple of years, so there's, I think there's somewhere between reportedly from the county, about three quarters of a million available. But if there's a shortfall in any of that, that's what the percentage would then be imposed upon all the members of that, this community workers' comp, and then we'd have to pay for those tail claims. That's different than what we would be paying for our regular workers' comp from 2020, February 1, 2020 forward.
So the intention would be to, and this was discussed amongst the municipalities at a couple of different meetings, spend down money that isn't reserved in 2020, and then budgeting for 2021 to continue to pay down tail claims. So there's a packet of information in front of you. Should we open up for questions, would you like to hear a little?
I do have a question, and I know you guys have been working on this for a long time because they haven't come to me, so I understand that. Somewhere along the line, I thought I saw, what we're boarding on today, if one of the other municipalities still want to make some kind of change or something, do they still have the option to do that? I mean, this is a sort of a first draft, so to speak, to get this ball rolling, is that how this works?
Pretty much, yeah, I mean, it's gone out, we haven't heard any negative comments yet from anybody, but I sent it out to, in December, I think, our proposed draft. And although there's a change in leadership, so we haven't really heard from the county, the resolution that they passed. the resolution that they passed in December was supportive of this approach, and the workers' comp community board that the city was part of and all the towns and villages were part of, also gave a positive vote for this mechanism, to, to hire perma to do the current claims, hire perma to be the third-party administrator of the tail claims, to form a board that manages this separate from the county and meets quarterly, does some things, has some rules, you saw that. Uh, so, yeah, I mean, there, there might be some changes, but I know there's a couple of typographicals that have been, that have been pointed out, but I obviously will fix. Uh, but any change that anybody makes to it, we'll come back to you and ask the substantial.
Okay, I, I get to clarify, because I have heard back from the new chair from the legislature saying that they look to address this on Thursday. Uh, I've heard back from two other town representatives who are asking, and they did not express any concerns, but the document that was drafted, was drafted based upon the meetings, and at one of the meetings, there was a concern about the timing, was being able to move this forward and continue it. So the city volunteered to step in and Rick burnt the eleventh hour candle, putting this together, and as mentioned, was shared with everybody, verbal, all straw called, but verbal agreement at the time, and Bruce Yard correct, this can be adjusted.
Okay.
I'm bringing it forward to council today, because I'm not sure exactly when the next bill is going to be due, but for us not to be moving forward and to not have a plan, a plan in place would be irresponsible. Since we took the initiative, so.
We're covered by workers' comp right now.
Yes, yes.
Don't worry about this. This is running more than management forward.
I, I, Matt spent a lot of time explaining the economics of this to me, so I'm in favor of what we're doing, it makes a lot of sense, I get that. I just want to make sure in case one of the other municipalities had some other, something they gave up at the last minute or whatever they want to discuss it, that, you know, I don't want to be perceived as, you know, that, that we're saying this is it, I just want to make sure there's, there's.
There's a little movement to that.
There's too many moving parts not to get it started.
Thank you. We could, we could talk about this for next, I mean, there's nineteen municipalities involved in this, so if we don't get it started, it'll never happen.
Okay.
That, that was my concern too. Based on the, the way I interpreted that email is that, hey, hey, city, don't rush it in this right away, we're still making changes, but as long as we can still tweak this as we move forward, I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah, so there is the potential that a revision could come forward, but I viewed it and I said, hey, somebody needs to step forward and move this forward, and knowing that Rick had put a lot of time and effort into this, I'm comfortable and confident, also based upon the past discussions, that this is more than just the bare bones, in terms of what we need to continue moving forward.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Do we approve a resolution?
Well, we do have a motion to consider, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's my, that's my. Further discussion? Here or none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. And, yeah, again, thank you, Rick, for helping push that along and it's, the new agreement, doesn't hurt to repeat, is going to be a cost avoidance for everybody that's participating in saying improvement over a plan that had done well for a number of years, but as times have changed, it was time for us all to collectively have a change. And agenda item number twenty-three and twenty-four, let's start with twenty-three.
Yeah, I, I can talk to them collectively, you both, you had both collective bargaining agreement, tentative agreement and the, the collective bargaining agreement with the crossing guards in total in your packet. Uh, if you have questions, I can certainly answer them now, if you have negotiating points that you want to change relative to that, I would request that you consider a, a, a executive session, but basically, they are continuations, more, more extensions of previous contracts than anything else. They were within the parameters that the, I was provided in terms of negotiating the crossing guard, the cross one one point five, which is what we indicated. And the DPW was an average, because they do it based upon an hourly of about one point six, which is the same amount that we provided to them the last time, so they just wanted to stay consistent. There were some clothing allowance changes, uh, we did, down the DPW contract, they did agree to, they wanted a little bit more for their clothing, because the price for the hard boots and the, and the things that they need are certainly expensive, uh, but they did agree that they would dedicate a certain amount for safety equipment, helmets, steel-tick boots, uh, new coats, the yellow coats that they wear in the wintertime and, and the summertime, so I thought that was a, that was a, that was a reasonable concession on their part, and I thought that they were headed in the direction of do, we wanted them to do. Uh, the crossing guards, there was very few changes there, that was, that's really just a, again, a change. Uh, they're going from a, I always get this backwards, but it's, right now, they can choose either a ten-month salary or a twelve-month salary. They're going to, I think, I think it's the twelve months that they've opted to go through, and I think that, did I get that right?
I'm trying to remember.
I, it's one, they, it's in the packet, it's in, it's spelled out, and we're, we, we've done the one that Mike wanted us to do, so that, that I know, so. And, and Diane downstairs, in terms of being able to compute this, the, the amounts that they get, so. They are pretty straightforward contracts. And if you approve them, and they do too, uh, this will be the first time, I think we've got all of our unions under negotiation, or, uh, in, in contract and not in negotiation, so.
Is that pressure?
What's that?
Is that just some pressure on us?
I, I, no, it's a joke, I can't hear you at all, you got the wrong ear.
I'm sorry, you're pressuring us.
I am.
Yes, right now. No, we already talked.
Yeah, we've had some, some stress, but then, and I think we're right where we, where we, I think, where you're giving me direction to go.
So let's start with agenda item number twenty-three, it's made a formal motion, a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute a collective bargaining agreement with the city of Portland Crossing Guards, motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second, John Bennett, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Number twenty-four, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a collective bargaining agreement with the local CSA, C S E A unit, and that is our DPW and order employees, motion to consider. Kevin McCarthy, second, Bill Carpenter, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Is there any kind of business to come before the council this evening?
DPW, do you still have a board, they, they have a public safety board and. Sorry, they have a head one by a while.
Believe it's monthly unless there are no agenda items in meetings, is there a need for?
Oh, you were talking. Yeah, I'll bring it up, I just want to.
So maybe not necessarily see the business, but, Bill Carpenter, do you recognize? Congratulations.
Thank you.
And ending on a high note, we will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting, Kevin McCarthy, second. Katie Stillman, all those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppo, opposed? As you tell, we are.